Approved the agenda. Made a move by, a motion by Mrs. Blaylock, do have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dr. Meyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any nays? Seven zero. Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Before I come down to the podium, I wanted to first acknowledge, and it's written more eloquently than I'm going to share in the cover sheet, but would like to pay tribute to those folks in our community and members of our staff that participated on the superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee this year. We had had three meetings prior to the presentation this evening. We will have another one. But again, they've been instrumental and integral in the planning and the development of this budget in terms of their input and support. So if any of those members of the Budget Advisory Committee are in attendance tonight, I would appreciate it if they would stand and be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Now, Dr. Baker, before you begin with your presentation of your, of the budget, I just want to start off by saying thank you to, in advance, for all of your work and all of the work of the staff that went in together to, to present this, to get this budget together, to make this presentation for us this evening, and everyone on the Budget Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to, come here and, and put input into this budget. Dr. Baker.
Thank you. I probably shouldn't get too close, then. How's that? Is that okay? Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the Board, good evening. It is a privilege and an honor for me, along with Ms. Gaines, Chief Financial Officer, to present the Spotsylvania County Public Schools Recommended Budget for the 2015-16 School Year. Some thematic elements are infused through the presentation this evening, among others that will be our schools division, school division's intentional focus on the future of the organization and our relentless pursuit of excellence, one of our strategic plan's core values. And I'm looking for a slide presentation. I don't like looking at myself talking. On my face. Okay. I'm gonna, thank you. The focus on the future is explicit in our division mission. However, the first word in our mission is especially pertinent, relevant to the development of the FY16 Recommended Budget. Like all important work that is intended to benefit our students, this budget proposal was developed together. In addition to the Budget Advisory Committee that was acknowledged a few minutes ago, I'd also like to express gratitude to the many whose contributions and input helped to inform and form this proposal. I'd like you to please stand if you are here and a representative for any of the groups that I acknowledge. Thank you to Ms. Gaines and the finance team, my executive cabinet team, the various superintendent advisories, parent, teacher, principals, leadership of the Spotsylvania Education Association, Spotsylvania County Public Schools staff members. I think we just about got everybody. And Doug Barnes and the county staff. Thank you. I really hope that I've not left anyone out, but I certainly want to thank you, the school board. Without you, we would not be able to proceed in the way that we have, not only this year, but over the last couple of very challenging budget seasons. I thank you for your leadership and support ongoing through this budget season. At a time of considerable uncertainty, substantial conflict, and great complexity, a clear compelling vision for the future is essential if we are not only to sustain, but more importantly, elevate the conditions and performance of our school division while simultaneously breaking down barriers and overcoming obstacles. So what does our school division's future look like? Well, it involves the pursuit of excellence alluded to earlier, as we envision strengthening our position as a leader in the region, state, and nation through empowering and inspiring all students to develop critical 21st century skills that are necessary and transferable for success in the future. And we strive to fulfill this vision through a personalized learning environment, abundant and relevant student learning opportunities, and strong enduring relationships and bonds within and across our school communities. Tonight represents my third budget cycle as division superintendent, and throughout the two and a half years of serving, the perceptions of our division as a good school division have been shared with me consistently. While this feedback remains appreciated, I'm reminded of the sentiment by Jim Collins that as leaders, we must be careful not to allow good to become merely good enough, but instead must work diligently and systematically to imagine and push for great, after all our students and stakeholders expect and deserve this effort. As you peruse our core values, the behaviors upon which our strategic plan is founded, I'm going to take you to the next slide. These core values represent how we must individually focus and behave in order to enact our mission and vision. I'm going to draw your attention to the one I'm reinforcing tonight: excellence. For us, excellence is operationalized as pursuing the highest standards of organizational performance and academic achievement through innovation, research-based practice, innovative research practices. In concert with other core values that are embedded in our plan, we have a high-performing collaborative culture to support the accomplishment of our goals. Aligned to our mission and vision, these three overarching goals: preparing all of our students to be college and career-ready, engaging our community in order to better support and prepare our students through enhanced communication and strong partnerships, and ensuring that the learning and working environment is safe, caring, healthy, and values diversity. The achievement of these goals is intentionally embedded in the planning and daily work of our large team of educators. As a result, they also drive processes, including budget development and execution. So what are some evidence and outcomes resulting from the continuous improvement in strategic planning efforts? I know those are a little bit difficult to see, but you're going to note ongoing improvement as well as high standards of performance that are illustrated. In a continuous improvement culture, our focus is on constant and never-ending improvement in areas such as on-time graduation, dropout rate, and advanced placement participation and scores. At the same time, we can boast of excellence in areas such as budget development and supporting our students and families with pervasive needs. Also noteworthy is that we continue to maximize resources provided through funding received in order to support improvement efforts. So at a time when resources are most scarce and funding remains at below pre-recession levels, our teachers, support staff, and school leaders exemplify determination and resolve when considering the continued improvement on the most rigorous standardized tests administered in the present accountability era. Yes, at a time when expectations are reaching an apex and resources remain limited, we can be rightly proud of how our teachers, support staff, and leadership, individually and most importantly, in high-performing teams, continue to rise up, elevating our students to reach the next higher bar. The next part of this presentation is focused on describing and celebrating who we are as a school division. Indeed, as the 11th largest school division out of 132 statewide, I believe it is fair to describe our school division as one of the largest in the region and the state. Also, given that the average school division size across the nation averages approximately 2,500 students, our almost 24,000 students represents a large division by national standards as well. It's also fair to describe our school division as diverse in many ways. As a result, the needs of our learners are often diverse and complex. Geographically, we are also large and diverse. In terms of educational planning to support our diverse student population, we must continue to garner and target resources based on a clear understanding of the needs of our students and families. Because many of our classrooms do not look exactly like the class size averages listed, restoring and adding vital resources to support our students directly in the classroom is important. With the complex demands on teacher and staff time coupled with the need for individualized instruction to both raise the floor for students with learning gaps and lift the ceiling for students who have mastered prescribed content and skills, larger class sizes can be felt more than ever. And how do we serve the diverse needs of our students? Well, we serve them through 17 elementary schools, seven middle schools, and five high school sites, staffed with caring and talented educators, many who have chosen to live as well as serve in Spotsylvania County. Noteworthy is the fact that the majority of teaching staff hold an advanced degree, and many continue to seek National Board certification. Now, I am aware that there are some who attend or tune in for a budget presentation whose primary interest and/or concern is the bottom line, and may wish that I would get to it relative to the budget. Well, actually, I'm about to. As for this budget presentation, we are going to celebrate our bottom line: our schools, students, staff, and parents. For our pursuit of excellence and focus on the future is most evident, not in presentations of numbers, charts, tables, or written summaries, but in the authentic work being accomplished each day. This is probably a first, but I requested that each school or learning facility contribute to this presentation the activities, themes, or accomplishments for which each is most proud. While many of the schools have common themes and improvement activities, you will be able to detect that each has a unique culture. And these slides were created by each individual school, and as I call each school, if you are in the audience and you serve a particular school in, in any capacity, staff, parent, or student, please stand. I'm going to highlight them very quickly, and so I'm going to apologize in advance because I know that what you're going to see is going to say a lot more and demonstrate a lot more than what I'm going to say. But I know that we do have a limited amount of time tonight, so I am going to go through these. These are our system of schools. Battlefield Elementary School. There, Susie Feins. I am most proud of their culture of professional collaboration and co-teaching to ensure that each child receives appropriate instruction. And Berkeley Elementary School. Most proud of their school-wide mission that lives through acknowledging that diversity is a strength, and the collective school community work as partners to ensure student Brock Road Elementary School. Most proud of their caring, stimulating learning environments where student performance data is used systematically to adjust instruction to student learning needs. Cedar Forest Elementary School. Most proud of the inclusive environment that has been created and nurtured, which provides appropriate access to rich learning experiences for every child. Chancellor Elementary School. Most proud of meeting all federal annual measurable objectives. Now, I'm going to say that once, because that's going to come up again, so when I say that, you'll remember that it's federal annual measurable objectives, because from here on out, it's FAMO. Famos, okay? I don't want to try to get tongue-twisted the rest of the time. But most proud of meeting all the famos is Chancellor Elementary School, along with their implementation of 21st century learning through technology resources. Courthouse Road Elementary School. Most proud of their focus on teamwork and infusion of critical 21st century learning skills such as critical thinking and problem-solving. Cortland Elementary School. Most proud of their differentiated literacy instruction, including their accelerated reader and super-reader Wall of Fame. Harrison Road Elementary School. Most proud of meeting all famos, their STEM lab for students, focused guided reading and math, and the homeschool connection that has been promoted and developed. Lee Hill Elementary School. Most proud of their positive behavior intervention support, PBIS. Now, that's also going to be a theme, so from here on out, it's PBIS. Their implementation of PBIS and their strong parent and student leadership culture. Livingston Elementary School. Most proud of meeting all famos and their PBIS success and technology integration. I was able to do it twice. Parkside Elementary School. Most proud of their school-wide implementation of professional learning communities and active, effective PTA and successful implementation of PBIS. Riverview Elementary School. Most proud of focus on character development and guided reading and math. Robert E. Lee Elementary. Most proud of their balanced literacy leveled instruction, PBIS, and a focus on the development of higher-order thinking skills. Salem Elementary School. Most proud of their focus on strong core instruction in math and reading and their implement, oh, excuse me, most proud of meeting all the famos. I went ahead. Improved performance in reading and math and their wellness program. Smith Station Elementary School. Most proud of their focus on strong core instruction in math, reading, and their implementation of PBIS. Spotswood Elementary School. Most proud of utilizing coaches to support teachers in identifying individual student learning needs and systematically tracking their progress to close achievement gaps. Wilderness Elementary School. Most proud of their core instruction, community outreach events such as Wildcat Family Picnic, and strong partnerships with other area schools. Battlefield Middle School. Most proud of their double-blocked math instruction and the implementation of the math 360-degree classroom, 360-degree classroom. Chancellor Middle School. Most proud of technology integration using Chromebooks as well as teacher-developed assessments to better inform and target instruction. Freedom Middle School. Most proud of significant increases in math SOL performance, their designation as a six-time Blue Ribbon School of Music, and their STEM program for all grades. Ny River Middle School. Most proud of their Google classrooms, Grow Your Neighbor Garden remediation program, and the expansion of their after-school STEM squad. Post Oak Middle School. Most proud of their partnerships with universities in the areas of science and math instruction using technology, their literacy initiative focusing on writing across content areas, and their community outreach efforts. Spotsylvania Middle School. Most proud of their two outstanding autism resource programs that are embedded in the school community. And Thornburg Middle School. Most proud of their destination imagination, regional, state, and international global team winners. Chancellor High School. Most proud of their library innovation space that includes 3D printing and their award-winning Lightning Regiment marching band. Cortland High School. Most proud of their incredible success with eCredit Recovery Program that has significantly raised their graduation rates. Massaponix High School. Most proud of their PBIS program as well as being recognized by The Washington Post as one of Virginia's most, and I'm going to put in parentheses here, positively challenging high schools. Riverbend High School. Most proud of their AP Bridge Academy, their literacy initiative for students in the Read 180 Program, and their after-school tutoring program called No Opt-Out. And Spotsylvania High School, as you learned a few sessions ago, most proud of being recognized as a candidate for the International Baccalaureate Program, and they're already a successful pilot. John J. Wright Educational and Cultural Center, they're most proud of their range of programs offered, including the Gates Program, Gateway, Alternative Education, Courthouse Academy, and the Parent Resource Center. And Spotsylvania Career and Technical Education Center. Most proud of budgeting funds to update and purchase equipment to support the outstanding programs offered. Now, I did not include these last two, but I've noted two folks in the audience who oversee other programs that are regional programs, but that we are the fiscal agent for and support. One is the Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Center, and I'd like the principal to stand. And also the Commonwealth Governor's School. And while I didn't have slides, I would like to recognize that we appreciate those programs and what they offer to our students as well. I hope each board member will reflect on these slides throughout the next few weeks and months, as I believe it will provide abundant inspiration and perspective regarding the many decisions that must be considered. Individual, team, or school improvement is really important, and I think I've talked to that many times, not only to the board, but to our principals. However, as we transition into the details of the FY16 Recommended Budget, it's important to reinforce that we view our work from a division or systems perspective. Random acts of improvement that are not aligned may work well in immediate or short term, but in the end, the direction of the organization becomes unclear. So our budget development process is aligned. It's aligned with our strategic plan goals and priorities so that we can continue to maximize our resources and achieve results that we have identified in our planning and process. In other words, even good results that happen by accident are at best fortunate and short-lived. Our budget development process is intentionally connected to our strategic planning. So with that, our primary budget goals, or our true north, include increasing our student learning and achievement, attracting and retaining a high-quality staff, community engagement, increasing that and enhancing communication, and ensuring that all of our school facilities are safe and secure. The major influences in the development of the budget include a continued focus on sustainability that is relative to compensation increases for our employees. This, in addition to rewarding staff, helps to support attracting and retaining the highest quality staff to deliver services to our students. In addition, more rigorous accountability standards, mandated services, and what appears to be the beginning of potential regrowth in student enrollment. Visionary Leadership Consultant and futurist Joel Barker identified what we are currently experiencing throughout the Commonwealth regarding accountability standards and assessments. Yes, the rules have indeed changed, a true dichotomy that would have been hard to predict, that at a time when the majority of state schools, including all in Spotsylvania County, were maintaining high pass rates on previously revised standards and assessments, and when funding levels remained well below pre-recession levels, and in the aftermath of deep personnel reductions at all levels, that expectations were raised again without any substantial funding to support student success. It could be argued that our schools were weakened prior to the most significant challenge we had faced in this accountability era. However, our focus remains not on blaming the current, albeit temporary, law of the land. As leaders, we must acknowledge that resources should be focused to match needs, and again, to elevate performance. Our most recent data representing a common trend across the state indicates that we must provide additional targeted supports in order to meet the current higher expectations. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. LaShawn Gaines to present the specific budget details, and I'll come back later to bring closing comments.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present budget details associated with the budget. For this part of the presentation, we will share six main areas. Major budget highlights, revenue highlights, expenditure highlights, major budget drivers, budget shortfall, and budget unknowns. Major budget highlights. A 3% pay increase for all eligible employees. Why 3%? Number one, the teacher pay at step zero will be greater than $40,000, specifically $40,572, which will help us with gaining a competitive edge. All employees will receive the same percent increase, creating equity. All teachers, support staff, administrative staff will receive a higher pay raise with a 3% COLA versus a step-only. For most employees, a step-only ranges from 1% to 2.5. Thus, the 3% COLA is higher than a step. Plus, VRS benefits are not based on a step that the person is on, but rather the average of their top three consecutive years of VRS compensation for Plan 1 employees. Number two, we want to celebrate there's no health rate increase for employees. Last year or this current year, there was a 1% increase. This is even a greater victory for employers. Our range has been an increase anywhere since the last five years from 2% to 17.3%, and we're actually projecting that we'll pay less in FY16. 22 teaching positions to assist with the more vigorous accountability standards. 14 special education positions. One school social worker, one speech therapist, two psychologists, five teachers, and five paras. Three ESOL teaching positions to assist with the growth in this area. Restoration of 5% of the stipends. Substitute rate increases, hourly rate increases. Based on studies that we've done, we saw that we were not as competitive as we would like to have been. This budget also entails a lower athletic fee from $100 to $75. Based on surveys completed of the few school districts who charge a fee, SCPS was one of the highest. Our goal is to systematically reduce the fee over a period of time. Additional staff positions to support school sites. Therefore, restoration of an internal, an instructional director position to assist with student achievement and to address the vigorous accountability standards. A communications specialist/grant writer. This position eventually will pay for itself. A nurse position to address the increases in acute student illnesses. 10 bus drivers and five bus aides to assist with meeting the compliance mandates, especially with our special needs students. IB membership and training, we're excited about this new program that brings new opportunities for our students. Non-compensation increases to assess, assessment resources, curriculum, and professional development. So revenue highlights. By way of revenue highlights, this chart includes the five major revenue sources of the school division. The first bar that you will see is sales tax and state funds. The state basically has a formula that they use to determine how much funding is given to each school district. They include things such as ADM, average daily membership, the composite index, et cetera. That budget there is $126.1 million. Local funds, $116.4. CIP funds, $18.6. CIP funds, $18.6. Now, keep in mind, these are monies that are borrowed and they are restricted. Our CIP budget cannot be used for repairs with our aging facilities. Thus, repairs must be paid from the operating budget. You'll see federal funds, $14.3. This includes monies that come into our food service program for breakfast and lunch, all of our title programs, Title I and Title 6B. When you look at other funds, you're looking at food service, the monies that are paid, as well as the fleet service program, for a total budget of $288.9. I do want to point out the other funds. The $13.4 that you see here includes a gap of 2.7. Going forward, all the additional slides will exclude CIP. This chart shows a comparison between FY15 adopted revenue numbers and the FY16 projected revenue numbers. As you can see, the projected revenues for FY16 are almost the same as FY15. The good news with the state budget that was presented by the governor on December 17th, there were no cuts. The negative news is that there were no increases. However, the VRS rate for the professional group did go down from 14.5 to 14.15, saving the school division $400,000. And looking at the federal line, good news here. The federal budget is projected to increase by $700,000. We're looking at $400,000 additional in Title I, $250,000 more in Title 6B. Our projections are more in alignment with what we've seen for FY15. What this means is that the subsidy going to these funds are less from the local budget. County funds, you'll basically see here, the numbers are the same. Doug Barnes is scheduled to present his budget on February 10th and will have greater insight in this particular area. Other funds, a net decrease of $500,000, and this is to better match actual food service cafeteria sales, based on actual collections. So as a result, the net projected increase in revenue from FY15 to 16 is only $200,000, or 0.1%. Not even 1%. This is alarming, knowing that we have more vigorous federal and state mandates that we must comply with. Knowing the need to retain highly qualified staff, coupled with projected student growth. Overall, you can plainly see that the revenues are not keeping pace with the needs of the division. Thus, what we have to do is to continue to put in place budget strategies. To meet the needs in the highlighted budget today, we will need an additional funding of $2.7 million. They say a picture is worth a thousand words. Here, you will see the main revenue sources, which are four. Our leading budget area in revenue is state funds at 47%. You'll see county funds at 43%. Federal funds make up 5% of the budget, and other funds make up 4%. I do want to point out that the revenue gap is only 1% or $2.7 million. Most school districts in this age of increased accountability have budget gaps that far exceed the 1% of their total budget. This revenue gap is reasonable and is within reach. We just need to have additional investments made into the school division to support our students. As we begin to drill down, just focusing on local and state revenues. When you look at the chart in FY2009, coming from the state and the locality, the total amount received was $255 million. If you look at these same numbers in FY16, $242 million, $13 million less. Could you imagine what we could be doing now with $13 million? From 2009 to FY15, student enrollment only declined by 1.6%. However, local funds declined by 4 million or 3.3%. Better yet, state funds declined by 9 million or 6.7%. To drill down even further, when we look at the next slide, total budget for 2013 cost per pupil comparison. When comparing to surrounding school districts, our local support is 42%. If you look at Stafford, their local support is 45%. Hanover at 47%. The school divisions that have a local support lower than what we have is Culpeper, Orange, and King George. Exponential highlights. In preparing our budget, these are just general roles and responsibilities associated with the budget development process. The superintendent, he's required to develop a needs-based budget. Therefore, you do see a gap because the needs are indeed more than what we're receiving in revenues. He's responsible for recommending compensation increases and proposing budget calendar dates. The school board, they provide direction in budget priorities, receive input from the public, and submit the budget to the local governing body. The Board of Supervisors, they provide local funding and they appropriate the budget. Who are the key players in the budget process? The school division's budget is compiled with input and feedback from a variety of stakeholders. Federal government, General Assembly, the Board of Supervisors, the school board, of course, the superintendent, principals, teachers, staff, parents, students, and the community at large. So what are some of the expenditure highlights? When looking at our budget, this particular slide breaks the budget down by fund, and you'll basically see six funds represented here. The first one is a Commonwealth Governor's School. This accounts for a regional program that serves gifted students from the school districts of Caroline, King George, Spotsylvania, and Stafford. When looking at the $2 million amount, it's basically almost split in half. A million from our school district and a million from the state. This particular item here, you see a decline of $17,000 because we're trying to match it back to their projected enrollment. When looking at Fund II, Rappahannock Regional Juvenile Detention Center, this accounts for activity associated with providing detained youth a quality education and the skills necessary to transition from the program to their regular school. Here, you see a slight increase, and this is basically because of the COLA as well. Food service program provides all of our food service operating and administrative costs, which includes funding from the state, the federal government, and cafe sales. You do see a $500,000 decline here. This is because we're better matching our actual revenues to collections. When looking at the fleet program, you see a slight increase. This is for a vehicle that they're planning to purchase. Keep in mind, the fleet service program is a joint operation between the county and the schools. Here, just to provide you with a picture, you can see of our six funds, 94% of the budget goes into the operating fund. Let's take a look at expenditures by category. When looking at the expenses by category, the first category is instruction. You will see a .6 increase here. This particular increase is $995,000. It includes a 3% pay raise for all of the employees coded here. It includes a reduction in the health rate, a reduction in the VRS rate. It also includes 22 teaching positions. It includes the 14 special education positions, three ESOL positions, the restoration of the stipend by 5%, hourly increases for substitutes, as well as our hourly rate increases. It also takes into account that we are planning to have an E-RIP program. If we have 174 individuals who take this plan and we pay them out 30% in the planned year, we're projected to save $1.5 million. So again, a lot of these particular items are being funded through reallocations of existing funding, taking into account the E-RIP program, and we're also anticipating that we will have lower costs in health insurance for FY16. When looking at the administration budget, this increase here includes the COLA, as well as a nurse. When looking at administration, it also includes two psychologists. Transportation, this increase includes their COLA, 10 bus drivers, five bus aides. This is to assist with the compliance needs. It also includes a reduction in gasoline. We're enjoying those prices, aren't we? A dollar and 79 per gallon. So if that holds true for next year, we're looking to transfer $200,000 from the transportation line into the maintenance line, and you'll see the maintenance budget increasing by $400,000. Those monies are needed by the maintenance department in order to take care of repairs with our aging facilities. The technology budget, an increase of $425. It includes their COLA, as well as a data systems position, and increases for non-compensation as it pertains to the synergy program and technical maintenance contract increases. The debt service, you see an increase there of $646,000. That's because we're now borrowing more funds. Food service goes down by $500,000 because we're better matching our actual revenue collections with our budget appropriation. When you look at the expenditures by category, instruction is at 66%. If we drill down deeper, and you look at the expenditure budget by category, if you take out CIP and debt service, the instruction budget, Ms. Carroll, is 72%. This is where the fund should be going, directly into instruction. So let's take a look at expenditure highlights by object code. When looking at object codes, you'll see salary and wages going up by 3.4. This is because the increase, the COLA of 3%, restoring or adding 58 positions, offset by the increase or savings from the E-RIP program. When looking at employee benefits, you see a decline there of 1.8. That is due to our projection that we will be paying less health insurance in FY16 than what we paid in FY15. When looking at purchase services, other charges, materials and supplies, capital outlay, all of these particular changes are primarily associated with the budget. So in total, when you look at the change, you see an increase of $2.9 million. Keep in mind, of this 2.9, 2.7 is the revenue gap. We're only seeing a net increase of revenues of $200,000 at this point in time. So if you look at the budget by object code, let's see IP. 77% of our budget is salaries and benefits. You'll see purchase services is 7%. Other charges, 4%. Materials and supplies, 3%. And debt service, 9%. As we drill down even deeper, if you take out debt service, including taking out CIP, salaries and benefits, they make up 84% of our budget. So what are the budget drivers? We basically have four, and these tie directly into the influences that were mentioned by Dr. Baker. Employee compensation, student growth, student achievement, federal and state mandates. You can see here the employee compensation trend data. We're extremely pleased that in 2015, the school board was able to give a step and a 1% COLA. This budget does include a fully funded 3% COLA. So despite the gap that we have of 2.7, the 3% COLA is funded. Can someone just say funded? I couldn't resist that. This budget also includes non-contracted pay for, it includes pay raises for non-contracted employees. The restoration of the 5% in stipends, keep in mind, this is a systematic approach. At this point, even with the 5% stipends still have not been fully restored, so there's still additional work to be done. Increase in the substitute rate, increase in the hourly rates, and the budget book will give you additional details. What are some of the other major drivers? Student enrollment, if you look here at the chart, in FY13, from FY13 to 14, we saw our first increase in students since 2009 of 48. From 14 to 15, we saw an increase of 44. From 15 to 16, we're projecting 268 additional students. Keep in mind, school personnel did utilize the county's methodology in projecting student enrollment, and these numbers will be updated annually and as we get additional information. Another budget driver, FTEs. In looking at 58 additional positions, many of them are positions to be restored because over the last several years, we have lost over 300 positions. And with the more vigorous accountability standards, it is time to restore these positions. When you think about our students, right now, they're in our hands, but in a couple years, we will be in their hands. So we do have a responsibility to give them our support. Now, what is the budget shortfall? When we first started this exercise back in November, the original gap was $9.5 million. At the direction of the superintendent staff, we rolled up our sleeves, working with the Budget Advisory Committee, the Parent Advisory Committee, Teacher Advisory Committee, and other stakeholders. We did receive a reduction in the state VRS rate. That got us $400,000. We did reallocate funds of 1.9 because we are prudent and we are good stewards of the monies that have been allocated to us. We are projecting a lower health insurance cost of 2.8. Federal funds, net increase, a lower subsidy from local funds of $200,000. Estimated savings from the E-RIP program of 1.5, leaving you a gap of $2.7 million. Again, keep in mind, this gap is only 1% of the entire budget. Most school districts, as they're presenting their budgets, they're looking at a gap anywhere from 5% to 10%. This gap is reasonable. So how have we been able to be successful over the years? We've been able to do reallocations, we've been able to outsource, we've been able to use different budget strategies. But the good news for FY15 and 16, there were no positions eliminated. For FY16, we continue to reallocate both comp and non-com positions. The school board has approved an early retirement program for FY16, and we continue to outsource our maintenance program, as well as our food service program, which continues to bring in savings. So moving forward. What are some options that are available to close the gap? Additional revenues from the federal government, from the local government, and from the state. Additional non-comp reductions and continued reallocations. What are some of the budget unknowns? As of January 20th, we're still not sure what the final VRS rate will be, nor the final group life insurance rate. The General Assembly is scheduled to conclude their budget somewhere between February and March. We're not yet sure what our final health insurance rate will be. We're in the process of finalizing our RFP, but we are hopeful that that will yield positive results. We're not yet sure what the final state monies will look like. Again, the county administrator, he will be presenting his budget on February 10th, and then the Board of Supervisors are slated to approve their and then the Board of Supervisors are slated to approve their budget in April. So we're really, at this point, just at the beginning stages, and we're not yet sure what the final revenue funding will look like. At this time, I'll put you back in the hands of our superintendent, Dr. Baker.
Vision without action is merely a dream, an action without vision that was just up there. I don't know where it went. It may come back. There it is. An action without vision just passes the time. But vision with action can change the world, and I, I bring this up because one of the primary ways that we together are able to, um, make a, a change in, in our world is, is through the action of developing and implementing a budget that's targeted to, uh, meet the, the needs of our students and to achieve our, our strategic priorities. We know that, uh, as in all budget years, we have a lot of challenges to face, um, but we can also view them as, as opportunities. And so when you look at this list of current and future opportunities, in the past, we have probably framed them as challenges. But, um, there are some opportunities that, uh, maybe in the past, we've called challenges, but we want to be the best school division in the state. Um, I think in many ways, we, we can, uh, argue that we are competitive in that way, but we want to continue to draw the best staff here. We want to draw families here. We want to provide that world-class education. Uh, this spring and March, we're going to have a, a visiting committee from advanced ed provide us validation and feedback, uh, across our strategic plan and, and across our organization to let us know how we're doing, to give us another external validation and, uh, ways to improve moving forward beyond what right now is, is a limited, uh, state perspective. Uh, we also know that, as you saw in the, the previous slides that Ms. Gaines shared, that we know that there is a challenge, but we'll call it an opportunity, to closely examine, um, our attendance boundaries and, and, and a look at how, um, as we know, future growth is coming, though it's still hard to know how quickly it's going to come or whether it's going to be explosive as it was, uh, in, in the previous decades in Spotsylvania. We know that we have to be ahead of that, and we need to look at what does the future hold in terms of how we will manage that growth. Also, opportunities, um, I'm encouraged and optimistic that together we can provide opportunities that currently are not in existence in Spotsylvania. And I'm well aware that, um, in my role and in your roles, that we, we receive and we manage very diverse perspectives in terms of, uh, as I alluded to earlier, what's good enough rather than what's great and what, uh, takes us towards that standard of excellence. Um, but I really believe that our students in Spotsylvania not only deserve the opportunities that are listed here, but that they deserve for many of these programs to be expanded. And, uh, we have great talent in our school division. We have great potential that's untapped in our school division, and I want, I want us to continue to target, uh, funding and resources towards expanding, um, expanding those opportunities. And one opportunity that's not listed in either one of the previous slides, um, I talked a little bit earlier, um, more critically, uh, about the state accountability, uh, I guess the state of state accountability that we're in right now. I am encouraged and optimistic that, uh, there is a movement that is really not one group, but I would say that it, it is, it crosses political party lines, it crosses different, uh, educational associations and advocacy groups, and that is to get accountability right in Virginia. And so I do see progress from some short-term and long-term recommendations from the governor's S O L Innovation Committee. I, I see the opportunity for us alongside our colleagues across the Commonwealth to redefine what, um, a high-quality education looks like, and in relation to that, what accountability looks like in a more balanced sense rather than, uh, placed on the backs of our children in one date and time and our staff, uh, on the event of one multiple-choice test or multiple, multiple-choice tests. It's, it's my perspective that, uh, or my observation, and I'm a part of this, that, that generally we, we judge the past and we become somewhat critical of the present, but to some extent, it's, it's natural that we avoid the future because of the unknowns. Um, this quote is about what I invite us, invite you to do with me and our staff throughout this budget season is to continually work as though we are creating that path for the future, that we are working together to ensure that, um, what happens beyond us is as important as what is happening now and the legacy that we all leave behind regardless of how long our tenures are. And the budget process and the budget discussions that we're going to have are a great opportunity to do that. So I can pronounce that name, but I'm not going to. The work of educators, and I would argue that your work as elected officials is, I don't think it's overstating it to say it's to some extent transcendent. Um, every decision that we make has an impact beyond now, and, uh, I am so honored to be in a profession where five, ten years from now, decisions that we make right now, hopefully, are going to positively impact the lives of students, the lives and welfare of families, the educational, um, trajectory of our students. And so, um, I hope that as we go through that, we can remain focused on the future and that we keep our sights on the overall excellence of our organization. Um, it's going to be natural, following this presentation, as I mentioned, those diverse perspectives, that, um, uh, in some circles, it may appear that we have stretched too far, uh, reached too far in trying to add resources and sustain resources for the future. Uh, in other circles, it would appear that we did not reach far enough. Um, and so we know that's going to occur regardless. But we are at the beginning stages, and I look forward to, uh, working with each of you and with our, uh, school communities to, uh, to, to look to the future. And these are just the, uh, critical budget dates to remind you of that are coming up, and there's one more slide of that. And so I thank you for your attention, and at this time, we will entertain primarily any comments, but Ms. Gaines and I can entertain some general questions. I knew, no, I do know we have an upcoming, uh, work session where we can get into more detail, but it is now your meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Laura.
I am. I'm sitting here in pins and needles. I, I have attended a few of these, and I can say that this is one of the happiest day of my life, and I, I feel... Can you hear me over there? No. Uh, okay, okay. Uh, I, I was just starting to say that, uh, I've been sitting here in pins and needles. This is one of the, without a doubt, one of the happiest day of my life, and I, and I want to tell you why, Dr. Baker. Uh, first of all, when you start talking about systems for schools and to see so many people that I admire and respect to stand up, uh, representing their school, uh, made me feel proud to be a Spotsavanian. And from battlefield all the way up to the governor's school, and without being too critical, we can always add to it our corps of cadet, where we have over three hundred, uh, J R O T C cadets who are doing the great things every day for the right reason. And, uh, there are over fifty thousand corps of cadets in the United States and overseas. Hours is in the top one percent of the fifty thousand, so that's something for us to be proud of. So the system of school is great. What, uh, I want to be, uh, brief, but it, it, I, I am prepared to vote on this budget without hesitation. Quite frankly, coming in here, I didn't expect it would be as great as it turned out. But when you talk about a three percent pay increase for our employees, no health rate increase, uh, no V R S rate increase, a five percent stipend restoration, and the lower athletic fee from one hundred to seventy-five, you just got my vote right there. You just got my heart. Now, folks, before I finish, a, as you know, I typically ask the principals to stand. Today, I want to ask you to join me and give our superintendent and Mrs. Gaines a big hand for all the work they have done. Thank you all. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. I think your comments are very well received, very well said. I want to thank the staff, all the staff for being here. You are the educational leaders of our school division, and thanks to Dr. Baker. This budget is better than what I had thought it would be at this stage, and hopefully we can improve it. By improving, I'm saying let's secure the two point seven that we need to close the gap, and, you know, we will need to have, uh, discussions with our funding, uh, from the Board of Supervisors. And a thought that I'd like to put out there for us to think about when we have our work session is maybe we need to schedule one-on-one with our, uh, supervisors, you know, with the finance staff and a one-on-one to, that way we can, after they have received the budget, which they will receive most probably by tomorrow if they haven't already received it today, that we can entertain their questions, answer their questions, and garner their support. I'm truly pleased that, uh, we're increasing the beginning salary for our teachers to be able to help us with our recruiting, and that you have attacked this budget on a multifaceted level, and the points that we needed to touch on, you have touched on. I am very pleased with this budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I too am very, very pleased with this budget. Um, Mr. Laura and I have been here long enough that my first year, it wasn't so bad, and then the recession hit, so I had many, many years. So to see this kind of, uh, hear the word restoration, it was, was big for someone who's sat here so long. It really means a lot to see programs put back. I made a couple of notes. Obviously, the three percent i- is wonderful. We, we have got to get, um, we've got to get our staff back where they deserve to be and, and work in the future, and I really appreciate y'all doing that, and, and as you said, it's funded, so that, that definitely felt good. Two point seven gap, um, you used the word reasonable. That's an understatement. It is extremely reasonable compared to other divisions. If you don't believe it, go check it out. I've seen it for years, and that, not only is it reasonable, it should be, it absolutely should be funded, hands down. It's one percent, it's a, uh, it's something we should invest in the children. That's not a, that's not asking for money. That's an investment, and if anybody thinks it's not an investment to fund that gap, just walk in our schools, and then that's all you need to do. It, it'll, it'll be very clear to you at that point. Um, the grant writer, I've been waiting on this one. I've been, uh, uh, commenting to different ones and staff that that's something that will pay for itself, and I think, I think that is such a smart move. Of course, I think sometimes people don't realize that we hear this for the first time as well. I heard it just like you did tonight, and I kind of like that, okay, because it gives me time to process, you all can do your work, and we don't, we're too eager to ask questions if you tell us, so it's a good thing you don't. So hearing that grant writer, I kind of just perked up a little bit, not, I'm so glad to see that. I maybe would eventually get there, I just didn't realize we were there yet, and I am so glad. I think that's going to be, uh, so advantageous for us in Spotsylvania County, and I look forward to that. I may have more questions about that position about, not tonight, I'm not asking for how mu- about how much that salary would be, just things like that, but not tonight. Uh, as, as Dr. Baker said, this is normally a comment time, and we'll go back and, uh, really dig our heels in during work sessions and one-on-ones with our superintendent and his staff. The twenty-two teachers, um, were those teaching positions, all of those teaching in classroom positions? Combination of them? I'll look forward to hearing more details on that, but the fact that we're saying that we're putting twenty-two staff members back into the buildings was, was very, very good to hear as well. Something we have not heard in a few years. So, uh, again, I'll get, we want more information on where those will be, how those will be distributed, but that was just a very, very good news. The five percent, uh, the five percent that we're trying to put back in the stipends stood out to me. Uh, it's a small percentage, but it's definitely a percentage, and it's, we're, we're getting back to restoring what we had to cut in that stipend back in the two thousand nine, ten, remember those years, Ms. Gaines. Um, the reduction of the parent, um, uh, the parent, whatever you want to call it, uh, pay to participate, uh, fee, down to seventy-five dollars is definitely a huge, huge, huge step in, to the, in the right direction. You know, I too pay that fee, and, and it's, it, it's definitely worth it. It's growing to, it's, it's investment in our children, but, but to see that we're working to take that, uh, burden off parents, uh, is, is a very positive move for the, for this division in the, uh, county, and I think that just that twenty-five dollars will, will make a big difference, especially on people who are paying for multiple kids, so I really appreciated that effort as well. I'm looking at Ms. Gaines, but I'm thinking of, you know, she's right there, the whole staff. I'm speaking to all Dr. Baker and his staff when I say these things. Um, those are just some of the highlights that stood out to me as the school board member that's been watching this, this unfold for, uh, a long time, and I'm, I'm just very, very pleased with the budget. I echo, uh, Mr. Laura's sentiments. I echo Dr. Beyer. Um, I, I would also like to highlight, um, some of the comments that Dr. Baker made at the end. I could not agree more that, in, in my personal life, I take it one day at a time, but I've never once come to work here and not thought far ahead in the future. Everything we're doing absolutely affects all twenty-four thousand plus, not only students, the families. Every vote we make, even though I represent a district and everyone around me represents a district, our votes and, and our decision-making absolutely affects all of the county. So looking into the future and hearing Dr. Baker talk about how he and his staff works from that perspective, uh, shows when you talk about the I B program. And that is something that parents have been asking for since I have been elected, and to see Dr. Baker and his staff be able to bring that, and Mr. Davis take that on out at Spotsylvania High School is just, that's really, really meant a lot to me this year. When you couple, that we can now offer that in a couple of years, along with our governor's school, along with our A P selections, we are giving our students every opportunity to compete on that collegiate level. This is exactly what we're trying to do, and so that was, uh, that was very good to see the firming going into that I B program that we have long needed. So I, I think that's all the comments I had had in my head. I want to thank, uh, Dr. Baker personally for you and your staff. Y'all know you didn't do this alone, and you'd be the first to give them credit. Uh, I know how you work, but I'm going to tell you, your leadership is, is truly impressive. It is, it's, um, it's student-focused. That's all we want. I can tell you, every school board member, we want you to be student-focused, and, and the lunches you have with our kids and the interaction you have with the students, and they know you, and, and they know your staff, and they, they know that you care. And seeing, seeing budgets like this very much show that we are investing right back into the schools. I didn't hear a lot about, um, things up here in, in central office. I heard a lot about schools, and I heard a lot about the county, and I heard a lot about programs. So that really, 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 uh, was a good budget for me to hear. I'm sure that we'll have a lot of questions for you, the, the details, again, just I'll want to know where the teachers are going to go and this, the, um, the salaries. Uh, one thing that stood out to me, you said something about a nurse, Ms. Gaines. As far as I know, we have a nurse in every school, so what was that? Can you kind of just give me generally what that meant? Where would the nurse be, and what is that? Oh, during the work session? Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. We'll put that down as one of my questions then. All right, and then that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you for the time. I really appreciate it. Very nice budget, very good presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Blala. Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am very happy with our starting position with this year's budget. Uh, the gap is very, very reasonable, as, as mentioned. Um, I, of course, have lots of questions for the work session, and just when, they all kind of go for future sustainability of what we're planning and if it's actually reasonable to be able to sustain some of that. Um, I just want to mention that I've been spending my Mondays in Richmond, meeting with General Assembly members, um, to lobby on behalf of, of our school system for, um, some of our legislative agenda priorities. Um, some of the biggest ones are just to fight against unfunded mandates and some S O L reform, and just from what I, um, have had conversations already, is I'm really happy with the General Assembly's goal this year is really top on K through twelve education. Um, they do not anticipate having to make any cuts in state funding, which I think is, is very good for us to have, and it's great that that's a good goal for them. Um, there are many proposed bills from our local representatives that are, are looking good and, and very promising, so I encourage you guys to keep up with some of those. Senator Stewart has some and Delegate Orak. So, um, those are definitely some bills to keep an eye on because they would help us immense. So those are definitely some bills to keep an eye on, because they would help us immensely. And I was able to, probably from the 30 that I've met with in the past three weeks, all of them have committed to not voting for any unfunded mandates. So we'll see if that holds true, but so far, it's looking good for us state funding-wise. I'm not exactly sure how to take our fight to the federal government representatives, but I know where to start there. So, and I would like to thank Ms. Gaines, because I am on her finance committees, and they are fantastic to work with. And I'm sure we will be taking up these matters in the next months, and I hope that we can solve this gap issue reasonably.
Mr. Blaine? Mr. Blaine, Ms. Grant has one more thing to add. Sorry.
Just wanted to add, on Amanda's point of us getting a nurse, the representative from the State Nurses and Education Association was in Richmond meeting with Senator McDowell when I was there, and she gave us a big heads up and star, 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 because all of our nurses are certified RNs. And she said that we are a wonderful county to have that happen. So just wanted to give you the praise that we got.
Mr. Blaine?
My fundamental belief is eternal discontent with the status quo. So that kind of tells you where I'm kind of having some thoughts here. I, we have a terrific division, and I've met with almost everybody in this room, and very close one-to-one opportunity to discuss, and not only with you folks, but with many teachers as well. And I can tell you, I'm consistently impressed with the quality of our personnel and the dedication that our staff has to the job of teaching our children. Last year, we had a budget of $116 million point four. This year, our budget is $116 million point four. I wondered, Ms. Gaines, was there an adjustment for cost of living in that? The county budget, we're requesting $116 million?
No, sir. At this time, because the county administrator does not present until February 10th, staff is just assuming at this time that the FY16 numbers that you see will be reflective of FY15. We're hopeful that that will not be the case. So that's just our projection.
That helps. Because my concern, and just a point I would like to make, that if we come in and have the same dollar value, for example, next year, that's our request. In fact, we're not going to be able to do as much with that money next year as we did with the same number of dollars this last year, because the cost of living, it changes. But that does get adjusted, because the people who end up paying for the cost of a living adjustment are the children in our schools who receive less quality, or less services, because the money that we have to spend does not go as far. And so that's a major concern that I have as we move ahead. And I, I hope that on our one-to-one relationships, as you've suggested, Dr. Meyer, that we will be able to sell the idea that our children need a little bit more. I'm appalled at the quality of preparation that our children have prior to the time they cross our front doors, kindergarten children. Just universally, so many of our children are not really ready for kindergarten. And still, we want them by the end of third grade to be reading at third-grade level, every single one of them. And if they don't get to that level, it begins to show up in fourth grade, and eighth grade, and high school, and dropouts, and everything else. So we need to concentrate on the primary grades, in my view, as much as possible. And I hope that as we address those needs, that we're able to, with the additional staff that Dr. Baker has mentioned, that we'll be able to find some room for some, perhaps, and these already may be in the budget, I really don't know. You know as much as I do about the budget right now and personnel. But I'm hoping that we can begin to get some additional specialists at the primary grades and content area, and teach teacher coaches, to help the kindergarten, first, second, third-grade teachers solve the problems as best they can, so that we do, in fact, get to have really achievement by the end of that third-grade level. Because with that foundation, our kids are going to consistently do a lot better. So that's, that's the concern I have. And I know that I'm going to be speaking about that as we go ahead. I'm very glad to see all the terrific things that are included in our budget, and the salaries and so on, and I commend our staff for making those kind of tough decisions. And I'm really complimentary about that. Looking forward to our work sessions, and I'd like to thank you all again for your dedication to our kids.
Madam Chair, thank you for giving me an opportunity to address the work that was prepared on the budget, Dr. Baker, and Ms. Gaines, and all of your various staffs that you received input from. I want to congratulate you. I jotted down some notes and how I could characterize the presentation of this budget, and I said it was not only innovative, it was comprehensive and audacious. And I really appreciate the effort that was given by you and your staff to present this budget in terms of compensation. We haven't seen compensation numbers like this that were funded, as Ms. Gaines eloquently mentioned, for our staff. That has to be a huge morale booster. I'm excited about the opportunity for coaches to be able to recover back just a small portion of what they give away each and every year, they give of themselves to young people and invest in them. And so for us to invest back into them and restore them to a point where their compensation as coaches is treated as valuable to us, to them, as they are to our children, I'm excited about that. I'm thrilled that we have, for the first time, looked at significant reductions in activity fees, not only just because the fees are overbearing, but we have a lot of young folks that have opportunities to go on to college, and they are competing with SAT fees and college enrollment fees, and parents are taxed heavy already. And so if we can give them some relief, I'm thrilled about that. The fact that we're doing it in a responsible way that allows us to sunset it incrementally, I think is very responsible. I think we're also setting the stage for some very outstanding strategic partnerships with the county. We already know by reading the newspaper, there's a lot of growth that is planned in this county in the future. And we in the school division have to be at the front edge of making the adjustments to that particular growth. And by having the IB program that we were talking about setting up at Spotsavania allows us to do some soft redistricting, if you will. Having the program at Cortland, possibly for the visual, I mean, the arts, allows us to do some soft redistricting. And yes, you know, we, we don't get to pick where subdivisions are located, but we have to be on the front edge of making some decisions to help alleviate some, or alleviate a lot of consternation amongst our citizens. And I think this budget gives us the ability to set a platform to do that. So I'm thrilled about that, and I think as we flesh out some of the numbers, I think the 2.7 will be a number that'll be easy to close, and I'm looking really forward to this budget year and the success this division's going to have as a result of this, what I call a very innovative, comprehensive, and audacious budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, Dr. Baker and your staff, thank you. This was, this was wonderful. Thrilled about the COLA across the board. If we'd have done a step, there would be a number of people who would not have gotten anything, except maybe a COLA if we did that. So this is helpful to everyone. The, as, as my colleagues have mentioned, the bringing down the athletic fee is something we've been asking for, for a while. So once again, we're, we're working for our community, and that's definitely a helper for our, for our community. Something that I've brought up multiple times is subpay. Yay. I don't know what the amount is, but something is better than nothing, and I'm hoping it's something more, but something is better than nothing. So that's wonderful. And last year, I also asked about hourly pay, so I am thrilled to see those two items as priorities, as putting those into the budget. This, you've, you have worked very hard, and this, this looks wonderful. And when you said that the bottom line is our schools and our students, that, that's a perfect saying, because that is our bottom line. If we can't support our schools, which are our students, then we're not doing our job. And that's what you, you made a needs-based budget, and that's what we need. It's for our students. And one other thing I just wanted to mention is, you have mentioned the accountability, and I want to thank Ms. Grant for advocating for us in Richmond. But I also want to mention, right now, no child left behind is on the federal radar. And right now, there is a senator from Tennessee, Senator Lamar Alexander, is heading up the Education Committee, and he is asking for feedback from the nation on testing and accountability, and he wants your stories. So parents, teachers, administrators, students, your stories are being asked for by one of our US senators. You can look, you can find the site, or find the web, the web address, or his email address on my Facebook page, but if anybody wants to write it down, it's fixingnclb@help.senate.gov. I've already sent my letter in, speaking with three hats: teacher, school board member, and parent. And I've put some real-life stories in, everything in it was real-life stories of things that I have seen, what we have to deal with, with accountability, and what I saw as a parent, what I've seen as a parent. So just want to make sure that people are aware of that as well. So thank you, everybody, for your comments. Dr. Baker? Thank you.
Do you have anything? Is there anything else?
No, because everything's on such a positive high right now. My only thoughts are, after we've risen everyone up to the positive and hopeful, I do think it's important as we, as we navigate through, that the funding picture and the, the closing of the gap, I do believe will be a challenge. And so I think we're going to have to continue to look critically, and I also appreciate it, in the midst of everything that was shared, sustainability was a big discussion throughout the forming of this budget, particularly being able to, anything that we do, to know that it will not be something that will be compromised in any short-term budgets or even long-term budgets. So I think that we're all going to continue to need to consider that as we move forward. But thank you all for your feedback, and thank you again to all of the folks that have been instrumental in this process to date.
Ms. Gaines?
I do have one item. While we appreciate and we are very dedicated, we do at this time want to honor our superintendent, Dr. Baker. So I do want everyone in the audience, if you would please stand, and let's give him a round of applause, because he is a fantastic leader.
Thank you for that, Ms. Gaines, though it's very awkward watching people stand. But it did give you a stretch, a pre-stretch break. But I, again, want to say that this process for developing just the budget to get us to today involves hours and hours, exhaustive efforts for so many of our finance staff, our executive team. And we really did seek input from so many different people out there. It's, in many ways, a, a community and a staff-formed budget to this point. And so I can't take any credit, except for listening and being stubborn occasionally about some things. But I thank you, LaShawn, and all of our staff. Thank you very much.
Mr. Laura, motion? Ms. Grant, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 7-0. We are adjourned at 7:57.